Okay. So we have one thing on our agenda as we did at our special meeting last week, um, which is discussion of eighty-seven Stone Ridge Lane and the adjacent thirteen acre parcel. Um, we have Mayor Weida Gardner here, um, who I believe has some new information for us. And I know she has to run to another meeting really quick, so I just wanted to turn it over to her first. And then, um, after that, maybe the commissioners, if there are any questions, um, they can follow up after that. Yeah, so take it away.
Alrighty, uh, thank you Travis, uh, thank you for having me come here, inviting me, even if it was last minute notice, it's okay, I worked it out. Um, and, um, nice to meet all of you, if, if nothing more than see your faces, so, um, or most of you anyway. And, uh, so, nice to, nice to have you in my, in my view. Of course, if we met on the street, we probably have on masks, so introduce yourselves if we see one another. Um, so what I wanted to tell you was, uh, I probably, of most importance to you is, we have set the date for the auction, uh, for October thirteenth. So we've extended the week further to give all of us a little more time to investigate some various options. And, um, it also, well, I would have met with the lawyer anyway beforehand, but it was, you had acted in enough time, just enough time for me to be able to, or for them to be able to set up a, a different date with the auctioneers, so, uh, October thirteenth it will be. And I don't know the times, the date, you know, I, I don't know the time, et cetera. I don't know if it'll be at noon again, or, or what, I, to my knowledge, uh, we don't have that information. But I suspect it'll be coming fairly soon, um, Kelly will host this auction. Uh, Kelly, uh, Varner is the collector treasurer, for those of you who don't recognize that name. Um, and she will post this, uh, auction, uh, date and time and all, pretty much maybe all the same details that she did before, uh, on the twenty-ninth, uh, is what I think she told me. So I did have an opportunity to talk with the lawyer yesterday. This is a, a woman who does just tax title law for us, so it's not someone that I talk to all that often. So I did, um, have an opportunity to talk about this specific case. And while I don't think she was involved all the way back to twenty-seventeen or around the time when this started, um, but she's been, uh, involved for quite some time. And, um, and that's kind of the way that tax title cases go, I guess, uh, they do start, um, you know, with the notification that you're not paying your taxes and we have to, we have to begin this process, so. And, uh, sometimes, uh, they can go, uh, for quite some time. Cause there's very, there's various steps to the process, but also because the city of Greenfield more often than not, uh, uh, tries to work with owners to get them to be able to keep their property, but also make good on their taxes. So I guess we got to the end of this situation where that, that did not happen. Um, more pertinent to this particular sale, and I will tell you that this is not the kind of sale for a tax title that we have very often. I mean, this is a rare case, um, this type of property, this significance both to, to, to your, you folks and, uh, just the city in general. Uh, it's just not, it's not the norm, and I think in that respect, uh, it's why it kind of slipped past the radar for a while. So in one sense, you did us all a favor. Because, uh, one, it's made me stop and think, uh, well, it may not be possible, um, well, I know it's not possible for this particular case. Uh, it makes me stop and think that we need an internal operating procedure that occurs somewhere in the earlier stages of a tax title taking that might be able to be, um, you know, give us an opportunity to figure out what the best process would be. And I'm only talking about these kinds of properties. Um, so whether it's, it's a significant wetland, whether it's a significant open space, uh, whether it's a significant, um, open space that we currently have some interest in, which I would, I would say was how I would more or less describe this one. Um, it, it'll be a, a type of process that I work, we work out with Kelly that, uh, would involve some type of discussion about certain properties, and I just need to let her know uh, what the, what the definition of a certain property would be, uh, as it relates to this type of case. Again, as I said, it's, it's on the rare side. Um, so, uh, just know that we will do that. And, um, when I've had a little bit further discussion about how that might happen, uh, as part of the legal process, I'll have a better idea of how you folks can be involved at, at, at a, at a certain point in the, in the process. My years of being on the planning board tell me that we, it totally different interests, totally different types of projects in most cases, although oftentimes Conservation Commission gets to comment, um, during the process. But we have a comment section for all departments and some boards and commissions. Uh, it's not totally analogous to, um, to the planning board situation at all, so I'm not sure it'll be the same kind of, uh, process. But just know that we will work on that and, um, I will try to, I will, I will commit to including you in some portion of that discussion. So that's one thing, um. What I know about this particular property is it does have to go to auction. Um, and the process apparently is we auction it twice, and when I say that, we don't do an auction twice and then pick the best deal, as far as I can tell. We, uh, put it up for auction. If no one bids, or the bids are completely unsatisfactory, um, then we put it out to bid again. And then after that, if no one bids, uh, et cetera, the city owns it and has to have a, I mean, the city now has the ability to do, uh, in this particular case, uh, some, some other action. Uh, so what, uh, I also know is at, let's go to the fact that it is going to go to auction on the thirteenth. So, um, my best advice to you would be, as I think I spoke to Travis about, and as I think you had, uh, put in a, in the email to me, uh, what I think your best options would be, uh, two things. One of two things, or maybe go ahead and try both. Uh, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to a land trust that may be interested in purchasing this property and working with, um, and working with us, meaning the whole, the Conservation Commission in the city, um, to, to take, take it on. Um, and other than that, I mean, or in addition to that, uh, I've done a little bit of research, although I, I am no expert in this, and I would have to probably do a lot more, but I'm gonna give you this idea, and, and you may already know this. Um, the energy and the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs, um, for the state of Massachusetts under Secretary Theorides, uh, is committed, you know, there, I, I assume that, that department is familiar with you, with you folks, is it? Um, okay. Uh, it would be a good idea to go to their website, I can certainly send the link to Travis, uh, at the, whenever I leave the meeting, or well, I don't have all of your emails, but I, I trust he would forward it on. Um, I would, um, encourage you to talk with them because, uh, they do purchase property. Again, for conservation, that is one of their missions. So, um, that's a, a avenue you might want to take. And I think that that's I have to tell you right this minute, but I'm, I'm happy to stay on for a little while longer before I go to the school committee meeting and, and, uh, either take your questions or hear your comments, or, oh, obviously, while I'm here.
Okay, is, um, is there a commissioner who would like to ask a question, follow-up question?
I think Fletcher was trying to speak up, and he may have had to log out and log back in. I don't see his video, and he was commenting in the chat that he was having trouble being heard.
Okay, it looks like Fletcher's back.
Okay.
Fletcher did, if you are, if you are back, uh,
Yes. Yeah, so I was, it took me a while to realize my sound wasn't working, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right, if you want to go ahead with a question.
Yeah, I, I think I missed the, the last bit of what the mayor was saying, um, regarding the secretary, um.
Oh, that, well, all I was suggesting is that you might want to go to the, um, Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs website from the state of Massachusetts.
Mm-hmm.
And do a little research on that. Um, they, I mean, they're, they're, they are committed to conservation and of course environmental, um, it, all things environmentally related.
Got it.
Uh, so, but, but more important than that, or most important about them, and I, I didn't have an opportunity to really dig deep into the, uh, website. Most importantly is that they do purchase property, um, for conservation. Now, I don't know what their guidelines are for that, what their restrictions are and so forth, but they're the state, so my guess is they make up their own restrictions. Um, so it's just a, a suggestion in addition to the other suggestion that I gave you as a way to, to possibly, uh, proceed.
Okay, um, thank you, and I, I guess, Mayor, I, one question I wanted to ask is,
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, you're offering up suggestions, um, I, I, to me, it sounds like to look into conservation options, and I'm pretty familiar with, um, with conservation options in general, and
Mm-hmm.
really, before we even get into specifics about that, my, my question is, um, I understand that because it's a tax taking, that the city has to, uh, essentially bring it to the public, uh, so that people have a chance to, uh, bid or acquire the property, and you're not doing something that's, uh, you know, a, a private benefit, in other words, you can't just like, someone can't just come to you and say, hey, I want to buy that property, uh, you know, uh, so that, that totally makes sense, but, um, the, the issue that I want to ask you about is, is why, um, I, I think we have to answer a couple of questions before
Mm-hmm.
we just kind of jump into that other stuff. And number one is why does the auction have to happen, um, at these timeframes? So it was paused and it was immediately rescheduled for the sixth, which I, I don't understand, because a lot of the conservation options that you're, right, I, I get that. Um, a lot of the, the conservation options that you're talking about, uh, require months to enact. Um, so researching is one thing, but if the, if the auction is pending, impending, I should say, uh, it's, it's, it puts pressure on us, which is fine, I mean, we want to get this handled as soon as possible, for sure. But I don't really understand, um, why it was simply a, a, a brief delay rather than a pause. Uh, that's number one, and, and, and number two is just, um, I, I keep getting the sense that there's this, um, position being put forward that the, the property needs to go to a, a property auction. And I understand that, I think the reason for that is, is because like I said, it can't just, I can't just say, hey, I want to buy a property, uh, sell it to me, because no one, no one has had a chance to, to bid on it, and it's a private, it's, I'm sorry, it's a tax taking, so you, because of, um, chapter sixty of the Massachusetts Constitution, I think that it needs to go, uh, to some sort of public process. So, so my, but, but my understanding from talking to attorneys is that there are other options besides just a public auction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that might be like a request for proposals by the town that involve a, a conservation procedure, um, uh, and is available to anybody as long as they fulfill that, um, conservation piece of the request for proposal, um, that was just a, a potential thing, um, put forth by an attorney. But something else would be to, to deed that land, the town to deed it to themselves, uh, whether that just be the, the main thirteen acre parcel, for example. And I understand that doesn't address the fiscal issue, but my understanding of that is that legally that's possible. Um, so if it's not, I, I think for us to do the type of research that you're asking us to do, and we definitely want to do that, uh, we need to understand the specifics of the legal situation as to why it would need to go to auction versus the town having the options to deed it to, to itself, for example. Uh, because if the town could do something like that, then we could potentially raise funds, uh, to offset that, again, if that is legally possible. Um, but I guess what I'm saying is we need more information to explore these options that you, you're suggesting, um, uh, like conservation restrictions, for example, I'm familiar with that, but that's at minimum a three-month process. Um, and it involves, you know, the State General Counsel, it involves attorneys that we run the conservation restriction by, um, and, and so, lastly, the last thing I want to say is just that, um, my, my thought is that the, the town is probably pushing to go to auction because it, it wants to recoup money for this property, which is understandable, there's back taxes, um, and the taxes, and the town's missing out on tax revenue. Um, but again, as you said, there's potential to, to recoup that money through conservation scenarios, which is what we want to do. Um, and so I just want to say that some of the suggestions I'm making are not in lieu of, of getting money to the town for, for that. It's just, um, doing it in a different way. And, and, but that is my question, is, is the town moving to auction, uh, so aggressively because, uh, they just want to get that money back sooner than later? Um, these, these are questions that I feel like we need to understand before we can, um, really investigate some of the options that you're suggesting, which we do want to do.
Uh, so, uh, the auction itself is being handled under, um, seventy-seven B. Uh, I'm not familiar with seventy-seven B, I certainly haven't read it all. Uh, but I do know that, uh, to be a fact from talking to the lawyer yesterday. Um, that's number one, but, but you're absolutely correct, there are a lot of for practical, on-the-ground reasons why it's happening now. One, it's at that stage where it can go to auction, uh, in, in the, in the legal process. Uh, and for all I know, must, it sounds like it must. Um, that we, we have the opportunity to do what I think the lawyer that you're talking about suggested, which is, uh, going to a thirty-B auction. That is something, that's under the procurement law. Uh, and that's a, is, uh, a fairly lengthy process as well. So I think a, a way to perhaps just describe, and when I say lengthy, it's, has to do with, you don't just put out a request for proposal, you have to, there's a lot of, uh, work that has to be done by the city in order to do that. Um, that's why I was saying earlier that under a, another scenario down, down the way, we, we may be able to explore in cases like this, what are, what are the better options? Um, so, a thirty-B auction, uh, could occur legally, whether it should apply to this property or not. Um, from a strictly practical, uh, point of view, uh, I'm, I'm not certain about that, I don't particularly want to comment on that right now. And unfortunately, very familiar with thirty-B because I can barely buy a stick of gum without it. So, uh, that is, um, a city, I mean, uh, that, it's something I'm, I'm getting more and more familiar with by the den. So to answer your question, the practical reasons are yes, this is, this property still has value, so it's not a matter of, of just selling it to recoup the back taxes. It, it could, it is a matter of selling it so that it can get on, back on the tax rolls and continue to produce tax revenue, which at the end of the day is extremely important to the city of Greenfield, uh, in a variety of ways. And, and that is, it's how we pay for everything. So it's how we pay for your teachers, it's how we pay for your firefighters, it's how we pay for your DPW workers, it's how we do all of those things. I'm, I'm sure you're, you're all adults and you're reasonably friendly, familiar with that, whether it's, um, whether you know all the intricacies of it, but the, but the revenue, the tax revenue is our, is our main source of income, and there, there are certainly many others, but that's, that's one of them. So, um, when that, as I say,
That makes sense.
That's a, that's a, I, I, I'm only bringing up, um, staffing, uh, uh, as I mentioned, because they are the biggest part of the, at the end of the day of the budget. So that's, that's the practical aspect of it. Do I think that there's a great deal of, um, value to being able to have, um, access to those trails? Um, up, well, we certainly have access to the trails up to the point at which the thirteen acres begins, and then the six acres. I'm, I'm familiar, I haven't ever hiked all that way before, but I live in the neighborhood, and I know that, 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 that trailhead at the bottom there, coming onto High Street or French King, where, whichever it is at that point, I think it's French King at that point, um, is, is used often. And I know people that, that do either use it as the entry point or the, or, um, when they come down from having started it in say, let's say Highland Park. So,
Mayor, can I just say one more thing, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, before you get away from the, the points that you brought up?
Yeah.
The, the fact that we're talking about two parcels?
Yeah.
And that the, um, the town has so far, um, essentially been, um, very adamant about, um, auctioning them both at once. You talk about tax, you talks about tax revenue, uh, the thirteen acre parcel is essentially undevelopable, um, from the, the perspective of the priority habitat on it and doing any like real development. I mean, for sure, there's, um, some things that could be done with it, but, um, any, any owner, um, who's at all knowledgeable about uh, taxes and, and, and owning residential property, uh, with forest on it, is going to put that into, uh, current use, almost for sure. Um, if that's, if that's possible, I assume it is. And so that thirteen acre parcel, I, I believe would be generating very little tax revenue when compared to the, um, to the six acre parcel with the house on it. Um, so I'm just curious if, has the town considered the possibility of, um, either auctioning them separately or doing something with conservation ahead of time and then selling them together to maintain the trail access, which is, the primary concern is on the thirteen acre parcel? Because that's where those three trails in the park meet on that thirteen acre parcel. You were just talking about the, the entry point from High Street, which is
Yeah.
for sure important, because really is that ever going to go away? You know, people, just because someone puts up a sign or something, it's, it's the ridge line, it's the only natural line across it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, but prime, like, as far as the bulk of potential conservation value, that really sits in the thirteen acre parcel. Uh, which again, I, I could be wrong, but I think it's going to generate very little tax value once someone puts that in chapter sixty-one. Uh, so I, I'm just curious from that perspective, oh yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I actually ca, I talked to the, um, the assessor's office and found that it would qualify for sixty-one B. And, um, calculated the taxes, so the, the, with the current assessment, the six acre parcel um, generates about six thousand dollars in tax revenue per year, which will probably go up when they fix up the house. Um, and the other parcel, if it's under sixty-one B, it's only going to generate two hundred ninety dollars per year. Um, because it gets a seventy-five percent reduction, and currently the taxes, based, based on the tax rate, the, the taxes are one thousand one hundred fifty-nine per year, and so
Mm-hmm.
under sixty-one B, it would only be two hundred ninety dollars, so. Just to add on to what Fletcher's saying, I think the importance of those trails are worth more than two hundred ninety dollars to me, per year.
So, but even in chapter sixty-one, I, I just wanted to finish, um, my point is that it's still going to generate some tax revenue, for sure. Um, and I, I just don't see what is precluding, a- aside from time and lost tax revenue in that time, um, what is precluding the potential of going forward with a conservation scenario on the thirteen acre parcel? Um, and then, uh, whether it be dealing itself to the town and you miss out on a few hundred bucks, uh, you know, annually on it, or, uh, using a conservation restriction or something. But, uh, I guess I'm, I'm curious that the town doesn't see value in selling the house lot separately, uh, since effectively, that's not going to really change the scenario, someone's still going to have their backyard of the park. You know what I mean, since they can't really develop that thirteen acre parcel anyway.
So, so you're making an assumption that may or may not be true at this point in the, um, discussion? Um, the, um, uh, the potential for keeping the thirteen acre process is under consideration by me and my office, so, um, that's why it's helpful to have a little more time here. Um, there, but I'm, I'm going to turn this around and ask you a question. Why is the thirteen acre parcel more important to you than the two parcels together or the six acre parcel? Because I would assume, and maybe I'm wrong, as I say, I'm, I'm an intermittent hiker at best and have been all my life. So, uh, I'm not as, as, uh, well-versed in it, in how one might want to hike those trails. So I guess what I'm asking, uh, what I'm asking you when I ask you that is, it seems to me that the access to, um, to High Street on the six acre parcel is, has importance as well. Um, but if, if it doesn't, uh, from the standpoint of hikers, um, you know, it'd be helpful for me to know that, um, strictly speaking, just from my own information and how we might proceed. We, uh, I mean, I will point out that for all these years, whoever's been hiking that has been trespassing over those last several acres, those last nineteen acres. Um, so that's just neither here nor there, but it's, it is a fact.
Do you mean the, uh, do you mean the Stones Rest, the Bed and Breakfast property? Because the, um, okay, because that one was posted, so they, they weren't trespassing, to my knowledge, because
No, I, I mean on the thirteen acre, the thirteen acres that belongs to this property.
Yeah, so the owner wasn't
As well as the six acres.
weren't trespassing, because, um, they were allowing, the owner was allowing the, the
Well, by not posting, that is true, uh, but, but in fact, it is what it is, so, or it was what it was, but
Sure, yeah.
Yes, and it could be, and, and we, we've certainly been contacted by, uh, when I say we, this off, my office, uh, by, by people who were planning to attend the, these October sixth auction who are very interested in, in keeping the trails as they are, by their own admission in their emails. Um, apropos of, and this is something I have to, uh, investigate as well. Apropos of all of the trails that are up there, um, I need to understand, uh, what the liability situation is, because it could be, it could be huge. And I think at the end of the day, what I'm, I'm saying in terms of the city itself, And I think at the end of the day, what I'm, I'm saying in terms of the city itself, the city doesn't want to be the landholder for those properties per se. Uh, for, if nothing else, for that reason. We simply can't afford it. So that's why I'm suggesting there could be some other alternatives and if, if you're willing to do some of that legwork and also perhaps even find, as I said, a land trust that would be willing to, to purchase the property. And there are certainly ones that do that and I'm familiar with them. But anyway, to go back to what, what you were asking, um, I, I am definitely giving some consideration to the thirteen acres. But why wouldn't you also want the six acres? Just, it's, it's a question, it's not a challenge, it's just a question.
Sure. Yeah, I think Travis has brought up a map and if you can see the, um.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just add the, um, the, I think the main reason the thirteen acre parcel is important is because that's where most of these trails all meet. Where, so if you were hiking in Rocky Mountain Conservation Area on these trails, you know, you'd hit a dead end and have to turn around and.
Yeah.
Not exactly easy to cross from one trail to the other, whereas this parcel, they do connect there. And then you can also continue down to the Connecticut River. And this trail, um, goes up to Turner's Falls Road. So there is road access on the north that way. Um, if, if it was cut off at Stone Ridge Lane, there, there still would be access to the north to access these parcels. And just, just to speak to the liability issue, I think if the city did own this parcel, it would essentially be the same liability as currently exists in Rocky Mountain Conservation Area.
And that's the piece that I don't understand at, at this point. I, I understand, what I understand is that I don't know what I need to know.
My understanding on a very, on a simplistic level, and I'll say I don't understand, um, in the depth that I think you want to understand, but, uh, since the town doesn't charge people for access to the park. I believe in Massachusetts, that's sort of the, the general, um, criteria is if you charge and something happens, you're liable, whereas if you don't, and you know, there's not an act of specific negligence, like the town had a giant boulder that they did not secure and it rolled onto someone. Uh, then I think it's pretty good. And I, I do agree with Travis that an extra thirteen acres onto the, um, many more acres in Rocky Mountain Park is especially continuations of the same trail, uh, I, I don't think is going to significantly increase, uh, liability of it. If there's liability that exists at all in a reasonable way.
And, and I don't disagree with you on that. So, um, and, and.
I want to answer your, I just want to answer your other question about the access to High Street, um, because I think, again, I, I think that is very important, but from a conservation perspective, I, I think we're all very focused on that thirteen acres because it doesn't have a structure on it. And it is contiguous with the park land and the trails meet on that land. Ideally, personally, not speaking for the commission, but ideally I would love to see, you know, if that was conserved um, and those trails are open, I'd love to see a trail easement over the six acre parcel. Not, not an easement over the whole land necessarily, although that would be great too. A trail easement that connected, um, that at least got that access on the six acre parcel. Because then we still, without the agreement of the Bed and Breakfast owner, we still don't have an easement down to the road yet. But, or I'm sorry, the A and W person maybe, um, on High Street.
Well, that could be true too, although I'm not certain that that property, I love that you've referred to it as the A and W person.
The only way I've heard it referred to is I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I know, it hasn't been there for a hundred years and I, uh, many, many, many years ago when we brought our daughter home from, at the time, what was called Franklin Medical. We stopped at the A and W to have a hamburger and a root beer and that was forty some odd years ago. So shortly thereafter, it closed, uh, maybe a few more years after that, but so, so.
So that would be great though.
I forever call it the A and W property too, but it's owned by somebody that has a quasi wood business.
Wood piles, yeah, I saw that.
You can tell, and I don't know that it extends that to that area that we're, we're all talking about.
I don't either.
All the way down to the road. It frankly looks like the six acres goes down to the road. So, uh, if you look at the maps that I, that, that we have. Um, I am actually having, uh, Eric Torog do a GPS of all, uh, Eric is, um, the planning director, I'm, I'm sure you know that, but, um, for the people that may be on the call who don't. Um, I'm having him, uh, walk the trail with the GPS and do an accurate GPS to get an idea of, um, where it all really is, you know? What we have are trailhead maps that may be completely accurate, um, and and hand drawn maps and so forth. So, um, I, I've asked him to do that and I think he'll have that information. I think he said to me today by the end of next week. And it's just mainly from my information, I'm, I'm looking at that whole liability question too. And exactly what are we liable for and what would we be liable for if we were to take the thirteen acres? I can clearly see what you're saying when I look at those maps, that to me it would make, as you say, sense to, um, if you hit a dead end, you turn around and you go back and so forth. You're not necessarily interested in going all the way down to High Street and then walking.
Yeah. The thing about the thirteen acre parcels, it, it would, if the thirteen acre parcel was sold and then posted or fenced off, then you would get a dead end. But if you don't, if the thirteen acre parcel is, is in play in the park, you don't even have to turn around. You get to do a loop, which is, I think.
Yeah, which is nice.
Way better than just being turned away.
Yeah, from, from a hiking perspective, I would agree with you on that. If I were doing that, what I, what I'd like to say, and then I, if I would like to complete it, I did, did forget to mention that, that we certainly can put deed restrictions even on the six acre property. It tends to happen, if I understand the process properly. It tends to happen after the property is sold, that we would ha, if we decided to go that way. I only have a few days to decide before the actual posting has to be done or illegal posting. So if we decided to go that way, we would, um, we would, in, in, in all honesty, if we decided to separate, divide the lots, they have to go through the subdivision process and which is, which would take some time too. So it's not clear to me yet exactly how that can be done, but I hope to know.
My understanding is they're separate, they're separate parcels already, so I, I'm not.
And they, they might be, that may be true, that's why I'm, I mean, it is true if you look, obviously, or, um, you know, you, you would have to make that very clear. Uh, and I'm not so sure that it is clear, uh, if I read the deed and they're very difficult to read, they're not. As you, as you know, when you look at.
Mayor, Mayor, we. Um, I know, I know you prob, you probably have to go soon, but I just want to add that I, I found, um, there's a recreational use statute in Massachusetts law. If you want to write this down, it's chapter twenty-one, section seventeen C, public use of land for recreational conservation, yada, yada, yada. Which basically says.
Twenty-one, chapter twenty-one, section.
Seventeen C.
Seventeen C, okay.
Yep, and so essentially it says anyone who allows recreation on land, whether it's private land or public land. Um, and doesn't charge a fee, um, it says shall not be liable for personal injuries or property damage sustained by such members of the public.
Mm-hmm, okay, good to know, good to know. And, and one of those people that likes to know. One hundred percent, especially in the position I'm in now, so, um, that's a good one to, to know. So what I'm hearing here is good to hear that if we were to do something different. Um, I mean, to me, it always kind of made sense, but we really started, started talking about it in this way. That we might be able to keep thirteen acres and sell the six acres, obviously probably for a little less money, but that, that's fine, yeah, the, the house itself is going to take a lot of money. The reason, and I, I will bring this up and it, it could be the proverbial fly in the ointment, um. One of the things that was pointed out to me by Ms. Varner and is that, uh, we really don't know where the septic system is on that property. So anyone buying it is buying it not knowing where the septic system is. And there's a possibility that it might be, but I say might, there's certainly the possibility that it might be both on the six acres and the thirteen acres because they were always owned by the same person. In which case that could present a problem, but, but quite frankly, um, and I, I know that that is the case. I know that we don't know because the, the health department who's in charge of title five inspections has been out there and they, one, within the department, they cannot find any maps for a septic system. And there's no one really to ask, I'm not sure Stephen Whitbeck knows, um. It'd probably be a question that we would ask him before too long, um. It's not clear to me how often he's been in that property or how long he's had, uh, you know, the responsibility for it. Uh, I'm just not clear about that at the moment. So that, that's, that's something that has to be looked at too. But from what I've heard from people I've talked to about that particular land up there and what I know about property in Greenfield is it's probably going to need a new septic system no matter what. And it's more than likely going to need an above ground septic system because of all the ledge and whatnot that's up there. So again, a greater expense. So anyone buying this property, given the condition of the house that's on it, while still from the outside and the exterior looks like, wow, a place with a lot of possibilities if you have a lot of money. And, um, so that's, uh, some of the, some of the considerations that, that we have been thinking about, that certainly for the purposes of what I'm talking about, putting the tax, putting the property back on the tax rolls. The house and the lot and the six acres together suffice as far as I'm personally concerned. Uh, and, and the ability to then maintain the, the thirteen acres for the city is, is also an attractive possibility. It is not unreasonable to think that somebody purchasing that property that already knows about the property would have any issues with deed restrictions that, um, allowed, um, allowed us to have people use them, use the trails. But that's such an unknown that I, I think we have to just hope, that's one of those hope and pray things. Um, and there certainly could be somebody buying it who really does want to fence it off and, or, and or post it. Both, so, um. I hope I've been able to help you understand some things and, um, just know that I'm continuing to think about this and, um, and trying to gather some information that would help me make a decision, if nothing else, about whether to keep the thirteen acres. And so it's been helpful to hear from you. Um, I probably could give you enough in time for one more question if, if you had one. If not, I'll, I'll go to the school committee meeting.
Do any of the commissioners who haven't gotten a chance to ask a question, have a question? I'm not hearing one.
Okay, well.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for coming to this meeting. Oh, I think I hear Rachel, nope, okay, I think that was just a background thing, I think, um, oh, there she is.
Hi, this is Rachel, I'm also on the commission. Um, my, my question is whether, uh, the, the council that is advising on tax lien properties uh, would be available for us to ask any questions, um, if they specifically thirteen to the, not thirteen acre parcel, uh, and the ability to try and, you know, the conservation, like any of these conservation options.
Boy, I didn't get that whole question.
I think.
You can, I think one else heard it better, you've got on headphones, Travis, maybe have been able to hear it better. Or if you want to, oh, she can't type it in the chat.
Yeah, uh, um, so I, I pretty much heard what she said, which was, um, the lawyer that, uh, the counsel, legal counsel that is advising you on tax titles, Rachel was asking if we would be able to have access to that person at all? If we had any questions as it re, as it relates to that thirteen acre parcel and the options for that parcel. I believe as a commission, we have to request access to counsel through the mayor, that's my understanding.
Yes, yes, you're correct about that. Uh, I don't see any reason why not, um, at the moment, I do not, oh, okay, thank you, Rachel. Um, I don't have, I can't give you that information readily. But hopefully by the end of the evening or first thing tomorrow, I can, I can potentially, I can give that to you. I don't see any reason why not, and, and I will let her know that. Uh, I would rather give it to you, Travis, I don't want the entire world calling her. Yeah, for, one, it gets expensive real fast.
Yeah, we, we would use it sparingly, um, as.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, thank you. I appreciate it, I can't speak for anyone else.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm happy to, um, I'm happy to make that, uh, available to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I'm going to leave the meeting, yeah, thank you, I, I've only been on for fifteen or twenty minutes. So hopefully it's still going on, I don't think it was, it was not a huge agenda.
Okay.
All right, oops, wait a minute, I'm going to leave the meeting instead of end the meeting, how about that? I have the opportunity to do both, but I'm just going to leave.
Okay, thanks. Okay. One host gone, they both said Greenfield City Host, I don't know if they were co-hosting Hannah and the mayor.
We might have been, yeah, but now I'm back to hosting, everything's good.
Okay, um, I don't know if the, I also want to open this up to any public comments at some point, but I don't know if the commissioners want, if there's anything you want to discuss before I, you know, open this up to hear from members of the public as well.
Um, I just wanted to make one quick point, um, I did hear the mayor say something about only having a few days before needing to, um, post, set details and post details about the next auction. Um, so that's something I just wanted to, to say once, once again to everybody here, uh, so that if, um, maybe that means we need to do some really quick follow-up, um, to clarify some of the points, uh, that were discussed tonight because we didn't obviously come to any specific conclusions, um, which it sounds like we might need to, uh, prior to the auction being posted again. Or not that we would need to, but to, to, in lieu of having to cancel the auction again, uh, if that's going to happen. So I just wanted to bring that up, that there is a potential timeline there.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just add that, um, as we've mentioned in previous meetings, we have examples of properties at auction that were withdrawn from the auction after they were announced. So even if it does get announced with the thirteen acre parcel, I don't think that means that it couldn't be withdrawn, that the thirteen acre. That's my understanding based on the examples that we've seen, um, at previous meetings. Okay, I'm going to open, yeah, yeah, Rachel, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm having, um, trouble keeping my down, and I'm just wanting to clarify. If the mayor gives a clear answer that it's possible for the thirteen acre parcel to be separated out and not offered off on October thirteenth?
Uh, yes, she basically said that she is considering doing that, um. That is an option she is considering, so I, she did not say that they legally had to sell that parcel.
Okay, thank you for, thanks for clarifying that, um, I guess I, my question also that is if you found in some of the, the research that you've done recently into the ownership, um, and management of other publicly accessible properties in town, um, what, if there's any precedent for like how much that costs of the, like. What, if there's any precedent for like how much that cost of the like conservation cost for that thirteen acre parcel is. Um, you know, I've looked at it and it seems like covering the back taxes on that parcel should be possible from our funds. Or it's not an unreasonable amount of money. And then as you pointed out going forward and seeing how other parcels in the town have their. Individual trust that being managed or that, that we have, uh, jurisdiction over that each co inside of like a conservation parcel. I'd just be curious to figure out how to, um, how to put a value on, uh, how much would want. How much the city would need in that trust to go along with the parcel in order to ensure it's future, um, basis. Like we have already, like the system that we already have for, for the other parcels.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure about, um, you know, when we, at a previous meeting, we looked at, um. The funds that the Conservation Commission owns. And I was under the impression that there were different accounts for different properties, but I didn't. And maybe we just haven't gotten it in enough detail to see that. You know, maybe one of those line items that we saw is actually broken out into each parcel. I, the, the one thing that I will add, um, is that the, the MACC, uh, the Massachusetts of Association of Conservation Commissions Handbook. I mean, it states that, you know, basically there are two ways that the, uh, the Conservation Commission could. Acquire a tax title property, which is either the commission could pay the back taxes and buy it essentially from the city. Or the city council just needs to do a, like if two thirds of the city council votes and the mayor approves. Then it would be transferred to the Conservation Commission. I don't think that require, it specifically says this option is free in the handbook.
Is that a deed and fee or?
That, I can bring it up right now. Um.
So Kristen, it would be.
Okay. That would be a lot easier than an E O E A chap, Article ninety seven conservation restriction, a lot faster and a lot easier.
Agreed. But just to be, just to clarify, um. Article ninety seven would still be in effect if we, if the town held, uh, fee simple interest in the property, um, as long as it was deeded for conservation purposes. Then, um, you know, if the town, or if someone, and I guess if the town tried to change use Article ninety seven would. Kick in, so to speak, um, at that point. But, but yeah, comparing it to a conservation restriction, which does require a lot of diligence, uh, restricting it indeed. And putting it under the care of the commission, for example, for conservation purposes and being owned by the town, granted by the council would be, I think, the most efficient. Um, and also sort of sustainable model, uh, by far.
Yep. And so I just wanted to add, this, this is where I read this. Uh, this is about transfer of tax title land. It says, although the transfer method has the advantage of being free, the commission with a conservation fund may save itself time and trouble. Uh, by purchasing the tax title land after strict foreclosure by the treasurer, by using commission funds. To pay the accrued taxes and costs and obtain a deed in the name of the city or town for conservation purposes. So I think it's saying, if you have the money, you can buy it straight up, like, you know. And then you have the deed or you have to go through this process of, you know, the mayor has to approve it, the city council has to vote. Um, I think buying it would be a way where the city council wouldn't even have to act. You could just buy it from the city. Unfortunately, I don't think we, I mean, we have some funds, but I'm not sure we have the funds to do that.
Although the taxes on that one parcel are probably.
That one, it's probably, yeah, it's probably lower.
Yeah.
Um, and, um. There have been, uh, NIMs tree farm, uh, property that we own. I'm pretty sure that one, the city council transferred money to the Conservation Commission in order to purchase it. But that was purchased from a private buyer. That wasn't purchased from the city. So I don't, I don't think it would make sense to do it that way. You know, if the city already owns it. Um, my understanding is it just needs to be approved by the mayor and voted by two thirds of city council. And it could be transferred as soon, you know, as soon as that vote could happen. Um, that's my understanding.
I think that's right. And I, I, I'm personally curious from a, a legal perspective if, is there some hybrid of those things? So, um, not that we wouldn't want to purchase it by funds if we had the funds, for example, but it may be. Sort of wiser in the long run to, to have those funds available as a, a trust or just as, as stewardship money, for example, going forward. Because, you know, there will be needs of it's under the care of the Conservation Commission. So given that case, um, is it possible to do the, the vote of the city council to transfer land, but also to. Behold a fundraiser or something to sort of like alleviate some of that burden on the city? Or are they sort of mutually exclusive? Either you somehow give the city money for the, the land. Um, to transfer it to itself under the care of the Conservation Commission, or you do it the other way. And there's not really an in-between because I'm sure we could raise some funds, um, you know, to potentially offset some of the. The, um, the tax losses or the back taxes, or however you want to look at it.
Yeah. And that's something I'm not, I'm not sure about. Oh, Rachel, I think you started talking and then you got muted. So I'm not sure if you meant to mute yourself or not.
Have I, have I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Uh, I think that I, it would be really helpful to understand what the numbers are actually. Because I think there has been a lot of, a lot of education from people that there is the potential. Like the people are willing to support financially the conservation of that thirteen acre parcel and lease. And I think that if we were able to cover the back taxes and if the city was willing to. To deed up the property for wedge, you know, maybe not for the cash, but if we were able to through rent the talent park or through. Another organization raise the money, um, that it would, it sounds like just a lot more straightforward of a process. Than trying to have a land trust for the, the E L E A B A show up at an auction and getting.
Yeah, that's, if, if. If they're talking about a land trust owning the property or, um, putting a restriction on it, for example, any of that is gonna be. Far more expensive and involve more diligence than, um, than the town deeding it to itself and, and from my understanding.
Um, I'll also add that, um. So for anyone who doesn't know, we've, I've been looking into, uh, the deeds and various newspaper articles related to our existing conservation lands. And, um, I have found that the Conservation Commission has approached city council in the past. Um, requesting, um, yearly funds to go into a conservation fund. So that the Conservation Commission can purchase properties, um, if they were up for sale or, you know, tax title, they could pay back taxes. Um, and in the past, city council has decided not to do that. So, um. I'm not saying that that's necessarily what needs to happen now, but, um, just to provide a little context on history.
And something I just, um, thought of is that, um, you know, it sounded like the mayor was potentially talking about, uh, uh. Conservation organization acquiring the parcel, but, um, she also maybe was alluding to conservation restrictions, but there's nothing that. Um, would prevent us from deeding the parcel. To ourselves, you know, the town deeding the parcel to the town, either through either of those two methods that Travis discussed. Putting it under the care of the Conservation Commission, um, and then also putting a conservation restriction on it sometime in the future to more. Uh, explicitly lay out the conservation value and the, um, sort of also to enact. Active stewardship outside of the town. So like if there was a conservation placed on it by, um, by a land trust, that land trust, um, would generally have someone. Um, on the property annually to monitor, for example, the boundaries, the conservation values as laid out in a, in a baseline report to start. Um, and, uh, I don't believe there's anything that would stop, um. You know, it's not, it wouldn't be off limits to, to put a conservation restriction on it after the fact. If it was determined that that would be somehow, um, beneficial to the land. Uh, and if, if another organization was interested in being the grantee of such a, um, a restriction. So. And, and the restriction would have potentially, again, it, it depends on a few things, but the restriction would have value at that point. You're, you're, you're granting a real property interest in that case. So if the value of that restriction exceeded the diligence that it cost to put that restriction on. Uh, you know, there could potentially be money to go towards the land in that sense. That could all happen if the town owned it already.
Yeah. And just to add some context to that, um, through the Community Preservation Act, um. Any land that's purchased by the city with Community Preservation Act funds. Um, they're required to have a conservation restriction, um, applied to the property when the city buys it. So it's not, it's definitely a possibility that a city can do that, um, because it's required by the community preservation. Obviously we're not talking about Community Preservation Act funds here, but that's just a separate process that, um. Where that does happen when the city acquires property for conservation purposes and open space, specifically open space, I guess. But if the city owned the property, you know, if the Conservation Commission was in charge of the property. That's also our responsibility, uh, to inspect the land and maintain it. Um.
Right.
So, um, that's the Conservation Commission is the stewards of the conservation land in Greenfield.
Right. And we, we would be free to lay out sort of the conservation values, you know, do a, an environmental assessment or a baseline report. Uh, upon acquiring that land, if that were to happen, um, and then sort of monitor it to those standards going forward. Um, but I will say, and again, it, it's sort of, you know, you need to have a willing grant, grantee. For a conservation restriction, but they, a, a restriction would lay out and would be a legal document that laid out. Conservation values and allowable uses in a more binding way. I'm not, I'm not saying that that would be, um. That that's necessarily what should happen, but, uh, I'm just saying we can sort of approximate that as a, as a commission. Um, and, and that's good, but, uh, there's, there's a, some distinction there.
And, and also, oh, go ahead.
I just had a clarifying question because I'm a little confused the difference between what you're explaining. Are you suggesting that instead of separating, trying to separate the two parcels and have the thirteen acre parcel not go to auction? That, that it would be possible to have a conservation restriction placed on the thirteen acres before October thirteenth? And then both parcels would be sold at, for private ownership, but with a conservation restriction in place already on the thirteen acre parcel?
No, 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 that's, um, that would be, uh, in my opinion, not possible due to the time constraint. Uh, conservation restrictions typically take at least a few months, um, for the review process. But, um, no, that's all, that's all I was pointing out, uh, is that technically if the, if we acquired, if the town acquired the parcel. I mean, we already own it. If we deeded it to ourselves for conservation purposes, that does not preclude putting a conservation restriction on it in the future. If you have a willing grantor who, who sees value in that and will hold the restriction and fulfill the, the requirements that a restriction brings. Um, and again, in like, in this current scenario, I don't necessarily see that being necessary. But, and you know, it, the process costs money. Um, so, but I'm just saying in the future, maybe there is a reason to do that. And it's not, it's not, um, off the table just because we own it. The town owns it for conservation use. That makes sense.
It would essentially be like a redundancy. Like if we, if we own it, it's permanently protected, barring, um. It, there's extreme circumstances where it can be transferred away, but it's not very likely. And we would be the stewards of it, but we could also permanently protect it another way and have someone else be the steward of it. So it would basically be doubling the efforts there.
That's right. And, and the, um, the same would be true of, uh, another organization, a land trust held a restriction. There's still extreme scenarios where that could be overridden by Congress, but, um, the difference might be that. You know, a land trust is specifically exists to, to push back against something like that. So there's legal funds, um, to do so. And also they, um, you know, may have stat more, more capacity than a volunteer commission to monitor and to generate. Um, reports and to, and to do things, um, related to conservation on the land. Um, but that's really, um, I'm not suggesting that that's, uh, needed at this time. I'm just saying it's not. An impossibility just because we own the land for conservation. Um, it, it's not incompatible with a conservation restriction in the future.
Um, before, before it gets too late in the evening, I just wanted to ask if there are any members of the public. Who, um, would like to add anything to, to the discussion at this time? Any questions for us or comments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, this is John Bottomley, councillor, precinct four, city councillor. So I'm hearing there are two things, the transfer method of the property and the timeline. And so I'm curious. Um, the mayor had used words like must and has to for the auction. So that really has to be clarified if it's legal, legally bound to, or if it's just part of a normal process. Um, cause it sounds like we could, the transfer method would be deeding it to the city instead of auctioning. Um, the other thing is the timeline. Is there any law that puts time constraints? On the mayor or the city for selling it because it's really fast. I mean, I know the city council, if it has five members can request a, uh, emergency meeting, I think within forty eight hours. So we could be involved that way, but, uh, uh, that those seem to be the big issues trying to do it quickly. Just from what I'm hearing, uh, and it's hard to do those things, anything without having probably a legal opinion. Those are just some thoughts.
Yeah. And if we, if we do assemble a list of questions to reach out to the legal council, um, you know, those are questions we could ask. I will say that in everything that I've found, I don't believe that there is a legal timeline that it has to be sold within a certain amount of time. The city owns property right now that was taken for tax reasons and we've owned it for years. Um.
A lot of the properties.
Yeah. So I don't, I think it's just that the city, there, this property is of such value that they, you know. They can get some money pretty quick if they sell it. Like, I mean, obviously like we, we want the city to have money, but, uh, we also want the city to have open space. So.
And we think both can happen, which is the, the sort of the point, um, that we, but I think, um, John, you make a, a great. You're calling out the same thing, um, that we are is that, you know, there's, there's sort of language being used. That sort of comes, comes back to the lawyers, like, like, is it, uh, must the city do it in a time, in a specific period of time? I've talked to attorneys about this and I'm not saying this as, uh, as a position of the commission or anything. I'm just saying from any research I've done, there is no particular timeline and they do not have to dispose of it by auction specifically.
That's, that's what I've read too, from everything I can read.
And they, they just have to avoid pu- um, private inertia and, or, or, you know, private benefit that isn't, um, fair, I guess. Given that it is a tax taking. Um, and then there's the fiscal issue that you mentioned. And again, we, we believe there are options and, um, it's just a matter of having the time to explore those. So that's something why I was trying to ask the mayor about that is like, the timeline doesn't totally make sense to us. Is there other considerations that we don't understand? And what I got from her was there's not other considerations that we don't understand, that the auction is just being set. Um, I won't say arbitrarily, but I think it's just from a fiscal, you know, concern, which is understandable. But, um, it also negatively affects our ability to explore options. And so, um, you know, I, I think that's, I think those are valid concerns that you, you bring up. And, and, uh, we, we'd also like to get those even, even more clearly answered.
And I, I also want to say the other word that I, I heard, um, the mayor talk about was value. And I I also want to say the other word that I I heard the mayor talk about was value. And there's a lot of ways you can look at value. Because we have taken several properties off the tax rolls to build the new fire station. Because it has public value. So I think there's a lot of ways that you can look at value and and I'm sensing from the public this has tremendous value. Long term value for generations. So there is a dollar element, but I agree, I believe there could be something in between because there's so much interest. I mean, it could be a GoFundMe, there's exploring fundraising. I think there's ways, but it's just, boy, with with this time constraint, it really makes it difficult.
Yeah, I totally agree. I I tend to take some of that for granted sometimes, but it's it's good to explicitly say that, you know, this like, like we wrote in our letter to 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 the town through the recorder, this is a landmark, Poet's Seat is a landmark, this is a very clear piece of that and has been used as such, albeit unofficially, these trails, that is, and you know, it's it's it it's not just public access, which is a huge part of it, and being able to walk in a sort of fluid fashion through the the natural space, which is hugely important, but it's also the the conservation value, which again is is protected in other ways by the the some of the status of the property currently, but but it's just, we want to enshrine that. We want to see that happen in perpetuity along with the public access being being enshrined as well. So I think that's, I I take that for granted sometimes in these discussions, but I think it's it should be said because, you know, in a hundred years, you know, we want that to to continue to exist as a as a resource for people here and as a thing that draws people here as well. We don't want to diminish it by sort of having a a blockage or 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 less a less of a resource there. That's important.
And Fletcher, just, it's when you said a hundred years, I looked at the calendar to see what the year was because one hundred and ten years ago is when the Women's Club of Greenfield was raising funds to purchase Temple Woods so that that was preserved. So at first I was thinking, wait, was that a hundred years? When it was a hundred and ten years, actually. Yeah, I will say one thing I was glad to hear from the mayor and, I mean, we'll we'll see how it evolves or how how it actually happens, but I was glad that she said that she thinks there should be a process for reviewing properties like this sooner, which was going to be something that I wanted to bring up and ask if that was possible. In that MACC handbook that I keep referencing and showing, it specifically says that it's useful for a conservation commission to have a good relationship with the treasurer so that you know when properties are taken, you know, tax title properties are taken so that you can look into them, you know, before an auction is announced. Unfortunately, that hasn't been something that anyone, you know, whether it's the commission or the mayor, city council or the treasurer, no one has looked into doing that in the past that I'm aware of, so. Hope hopefully that does happen. I think that would be useful, you know, obviously, properties like this aren't going to come up all the time, but I think there have been two recently, I think this property and then there's a property on Spring Terrace that was all like wetlands and forest and it's just across the street from Rocky Mountain Park. That also was a tax title property and went up for auction and there were many comments in the open space and recreation plan about why didn't the city save that, you know, why? Why did someone have to buy it to preserve it? Why couldn't the city have done that? And that's, we I think we talked about it in our meeting when that was sold. That was like a year or two ago, but we didn't know about it. And that's why, that's why we couldn't do anything about it then. So if we knew about these things, you know, ahead of time, we wouldn't have a time crunch.
There's another great example of that within the the park as well, within Temple Woods, or I should say a budding Temple Woods that most people think is part of the Temple Woods, which is that Abercrombie Fields, Old Center School, I believe, property. You know, there's a large twenty forty acre parcel, pretty large down there that's owned but not protected, that was almost sold that we would didn't hear about. But it's, you know, it's used as part of the park and it's got, it's got conservation value as it as it stands. And I think the mayor was making a great point that when a land is clear clearly has those values that the Conservation Commission, it would be great if we we got to see that and potentially come to a solution that works for, you know, for those conservation values, the public access values and potentially the fiscal values as well.
I just wanted to, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I I also wanted to point out Travis, that when you excerpted those pages from the the MACC handbook, it says that Conservation Commission shall provide an annual report, which I don't believe has been done in the time that I have been on the Conservation Commission. And I, this this property, along with the Spring Terrace property, and then learning the different steps that would be necessary in order to actually work our way down from this thirteen acre parcel to conserve the entrance of the trails of that old ANW. And then also hearing that from Fletcher makes me think that I I really would love to use our our time and our energy and a lot of this work that you put in already Travis, starting to understand our what we actually have here to come up with a strategic plan so that we understand what kinds of like, what kinds of actions would be in our purview to take to secure some of these things? Where are the actual vulnerabilities of that park? Because it's a really special and really large contiguous piece of open land. And I wonder if we can kind of resurrect the annual report energy to try and and put some of that together because we don't have to wait for these things to go up for auction. We can, we can, we can approach landowners and homeowners and say, look, we're concerned about, you know, we know that there's access, that there's trails through your property, you've been very kind and generous to allow that to happen. Are you committed to that happening in perpetuity? And can we work with you and the city to come up with a an agreement or deed restriction or easement or whatever it is in order to officially connect this to the park since it's been unofficially connected for, in this case, over seventy years in private ownership? So I'd really love to kind of bring back the spirit of of understanding our properties and what lies right outside of them or into the rhythm of the conservation, what we do on a regular basis. And I had one question for councillor Bottomley, if he is still on the call, which is theoretically, if we were to be able to understand and get all the documents that would be needed in order to come to the council for a vote to be this this thirteen acre parcel to the Conservation Commission, when would we need to have that information? I understand the council needs a third Wednesday of the month, so the next meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting wouldn't be until after the auction. But how much ahead of the meeting do you require, would you require us to have all of the information for the council in order for it to be put on the agenda?
I I'm not totally sure on this, but I I think we need to have forty eight hours notice to do a emergency meeting of the council. And I'm I'm sure that we could get five sponsors to to make that happen.
I think I think Rachel might have been asking, like, for a regular meeting, how how early would we need to contact you to get on the agenda? Forty eight hours?
No, normally, let me think here. It usually, I mean, it would be more than a month in advance, I think, to get, normally, the process is going through various committees. So again, again, it's pretty, it's a fairly lengthy process. I'd have to, I'm not sure which committee that would go through, though. If that'd be economic development? Or, boy, that's a, that's a, I'm not sure.
We could contact the city clerk and I'm sure.
Yeah, the city clerk would know for sure.
Yeah, and I think I just want to add that I think that's why in that document it says that although this process is free, the that we could save ourselves, you know, the time if we could just purchase it. I think that's why it's saying, you know, it's free, but you have to jump through these committees and then, you know, go through the committee and then get to a vote. I think the mayor has to approve it also, so. There are a lot of steps to get through, and I I think if this thirteen acre parcel were to become conservation land, it would be well after the auction. It would, it would need to be withdrawn from the auction and then you know, initiate this process and then, you know, a couple of months from now, maybe it could happen. That's my, that's my assumption for like the earliest that can probably happen. And as we said before, I I don't believe it would cost the city anything, just time and arranging everything.
And so just to reiterate what Rachel Rachel brought up is that it sounds like we do want definitely want to figure out, you know, sort of what is the back tax obligation on that one parcel? And, you know, do we have the potential to use some of our existing funds or fundraise for that? So that that option is viable versus the option of going through city council as well? And sort of, you know, just to have those on the table.
So I'm wondering if so we have another meeting Tuesday next week. But I believe that is our last meeting. Yeah, that would be our last meeting before the, no, we would have one on the the day before the auction, which I think would be too late. Do the councillor or councillors, commissioners, should we develop some questions now in this meeting to send to the legal council and then I could send those? And then at our meeting on Tuesday, if we get a response by then, we could discuss. I know it's on the agenda, eighty seven Stone Ridge Lane is on the agenda for Tuesday's meeting. I don't know if, are we ready to develop questions? Or should we wait until, we could, we could wait until that meeting and then I mean, we could set up another special meeting before the auction.
I think I think we should take a limited amount of time now and try to at least start on those questions and potentially send them as soon as possible to the mayor because, you know, if we if we do wait for that other meeting, who knows what might be going on internally that might make it even less of a, even a tighter timeframe after that.
Yeah. Okay, just because I spent so much time putting this together, I just want to show you guys a little thing. I was looking.
I saw it, it looked, it looked nice.
Yeah, it looked good. This one's, I'm gonna, my plan is to send this to the mayor. I, sorry, Rachel, you might not be able to see this very well, but I'll try to summarize what's going on. I put to get, you might have seen it already. This is basically kind of a comparison of what the options would be as I understand them. And I put this together in one night with a lot of guesstimating, so don't hold me to it or anything, but these are just some ideas that I had. So this is, these are the parcels, you know, one of the options is to just not do anything and who knows what could happen. You know, just let it go to auction. Option two would be the entire thing becoming conservation land. Obviously, that's all protected, but then we own a house and I don't think the city wants to do that. Option three, keep the thirteen acre parcel, sell the six acre parcel. You know, that keeps most of the open space and the trails, but we don't have that trailhead to the to the road. Or four would be like conservation restrictions on all of the trails and then sell the property. So I I know the city is concerned about the financial aspect, so I kind of came up with some estimates that I could find on people giving advice on how to bid on a tax title auction as to what it might go for. So these are just, you know, made up numbers, but essentially, this is like, you know, if the properties were sold or, you know, with all those options, how much money would the city get? And this is like assuming, you know, a certain amount of sale, but it would be the same for each option. Also, I added fifty thousand dollars to the house assessment after five years because I imagine it's going to get fixed up a bit. And this also assumes a sixty one B tax abatement on the thirteen acre parcel, which is, you know, it reduces the taxes by seventy five percent and it's only two hundred and ninety dollars per year. And then I also, just to go way over the top, I found that in the past twenty years, property tax increases average point two seven percent per year. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down, but I just threw that in. So this just shows that basically, whether it's auctioned as is, whether we keep the thirteen acres or take the time and put conservation restrictions, you know, over time, the city is making almost the same amount of money. It's really, it's like ninety percent of that or ninety five percent of that, you know, it's very close. The only way the city doesn't make any money is if we keep both parcels and then we're in the negative because we already lost money on it from taxes. And then we'll have to pay to do something with the house. That's the main thing there. So then I put together this table of basically just looking at the pros and cons of each of those options. And the criteria I have here, access to trails, financial impact to the city, the amount of time to implement it, and then kind of like the overall open space. And I mean, to me, looking at this, knowing that the the city does seem, or the mayor seems very set on selling the six acre parcel and also that the auction hasn't been pushed back very much, I don't think there's time for conservation restrictions before the auction. But if we keep that thirteen acre lot and sell the house, most of the trails are preserved. The city is still getting ninety percent of, you know, if they just sold it outright. All that would need to happen is that one parcel gets withdrawn, the city, the auction can go ahead on the thirteenth now, I guess. And then the council, you know, would have to go through the process of the council voting and everything, but the city would own it, so there's no rush. And then, you know, then it's owned by the city and we can manage it as open space in perpetuity. So I put this together just to show kind of like the pros and cons of each each option and I think the keeping the thirteen acre lot is pretty attractive in my opinion. So anyway, I put that together last night, so I thought I should show it off at least.
Yeah, I think that's awesome comparison. I think we could potentially tweak that a bit, given some of the info we got tonight. But but utilize the exact same template and I will say one thing that that still, you know, we still have that that timeframe, which again, I don't want to flat out use the word arbitrary, but it's, you know, maybe unnecessary to have that particular time burden. So I don't want us to get too caught up in, you know, racing to to find an option that fulfills everybody's criteria within some time limit that could be very easily extended to enable other options. So I think, you know, once we put together this list of questions, one of those can be, you know, why not postpone the auction for for additional time so that we can, we can look at, look at these options in more detail? I think that's particularly important and we shouldn't just take it for granted.
So to that point, you're asking about questions. Are you referring to questions to the city's legal council or questions to the mayor?
It could be, it would, there would be questions that we would ask to be answered in a legally definitive way.
So it could be to the legal council to ask, you know, is it legally possible to, you know, postpone or like indefinitely postpone the auction until, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because, you know, we could, I'm sure we could find an attorney who would probably do this research for us at a very reasonable fee, but that still would require the town's council to sort of concur on these things. And so just going straight to them, I think is really the only or it would be the best option.
Yeah, and what I found said that the that we can seek an outside council only if that is not provided by the city, I think. So I think if the city is providing access to council. So I think if the city is providing access to council, that's the route we have to go. Which that's who we want to talk to anyway, and the mayor is going to give me the contact information, so I think, I think we'll have that, you know. Have what we need.
Yeah.
So I'm going to share my screen because I was writing down some note, oh, um, Stephen, uh, we did, we did open this to any public comments, so Stephen, I don't know if you had any comments to add. I saw a hand up.
Oh, I just had a, a quick question. This is John Bottomley again. At some point, it may require outside counsel because obviously the council represents the city's interests, maybe not the conservation commission. I just wanted to throw that in there just to be devil's advocate.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's true. Uh, Stephen, you are muted. I can see you talking, but you're muted right now. There you go.
Um, it, it is the city that's being recalcitrant. It, it's, it, they've made it an adversarial situation. So it's um, seems a bit delicate. I, I feel as though we do need a, a third council.
And I guess the only thing I would add to that is that we are also the city. Um, you know, like uh, it's not us versus the city, it's city versus city because we're, you know, we're a city commission that's trying to
Indeed.
Advocate for a position by another part of the city.
It's, it's internal for sure.
It's internal and adversarial, so it's quite complex, I think.
Stephen, I, I was, I wanted to ask if um, you had um, mentioned a map and uh, there were some questions that came up earlier about uh, property lines and all that, and I was, I was just curious if um, if that's something you did have access to that you could, basically any, any information um, that's not recorded in the registry of deeds um, for everybody to see, it would be helpful uh, if, if you had anything like that.
The map that I have here does not identify the river as the river, it just calls it Turner's Falls Company territory.
I see.
Um, I know I have other maps in storage that represent things differently and other descriptions of the property line, so I can, I can look for those and who would I bring them to?
I, I think if you um, uh, as far as if they were physical, in physical form as opposed to digital form.
Oh, absolutely.
I think Sanderson Street would be the, the, the way, but I'm not totally sure, Travis, maybe you have a different idea.
Yeah, I would say um, you know, we have a conservation agent Hannah Davis um, who works at, is it twenty Sanderson Street? I think that's right.
Yeah, it's twenty Sanderson Street. I'm there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but you can come by any day and drop it off. We have the city planner in the same office.
Okay. Second, if there is something you wanted to add, that would be the way to do it, I guess.
Okay, sure. Um, all right.
And we, like I said, you may not have been here when I mentioned this before, but we are meeting, we have a regular meeting on Tuesday next week, so we may discuss this issue on Tuesday um, at six thirty PM. And that will also be a remote meeting, but we do have other agenda items as well. Okay, so I'm gonna um, I'm gonna share my screen again. I was kind of writing notes about w- w- things that we were talking about that we might want to discuss with the city's legal counsel. This is what I had come up with so far, which obviously I would word these questions better before I sent them, but one was, is the city legally required to sell these parcels? Um, it sounds like probably no, but it, it would be good to have a lawyer say that. Two, is there a legally enforceable timeline for selling these or is that, you know, at the whim of the city? Uh, I don't remember what this one was. I wrote back tax obligation on that. Oh, what, what is the back tax, you know? How much is?
I can fill you in on that.
Yeah, that, that I think Mass Land Records, um, it's, it's pretty available there. I just don't know if that's the comprehensive number, but uh, I think I saw that there.
Oh, it goes up every month.
But it shouldn't go up, shouldn't go up now because the city owns it, right, so.
That's a theory.
That, I, I guess.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to say, one thing to put down is um, I, I'm pretty sure maybe you know, someone here knows, but I believe the city foreclosed the writer redemption already.
They did.
Which is, okay.
So this has nothing to do with me anymore.
Yeah, Fletcher, can you explain what that is? Because I'm actually not sure.
Um, I'm not super clear, but as far as I know, the writer redemption um, is sort of like the tack, the town can take the property, but then the property owner has an opportunity to um, make good on the, on the amount or something. I don't know which particular amount, but um, I assume the back taxes and they essentially get first shot at kind of doing that before everybody else gets a shot, is my very basic understanding of that.
Okay, and so that, that period has.
That's done, yeah.
Yeah, and so that part has passed, okay.
So now, in theory, the only way for new ownership to apply is through, through gifting by the city or, or the auction process.
Right, so can we, can we maybe add, does, do these parcels have to be auctioned? Are there alternatives such as putting out a request or you know, an RFP as Fletcher pointed out earlier, um, or other options that haven't been fully discussed?
I have a friend who's been active in planning in the state for some time, and she said that there is a normal process for analyzing properties for their best usage. And I don't know what that's called. Uh, but that is one route that municipalities are expected to take if they have a property of unusual interest.
I might also suggest when you ask, is it legally required to sell, if they could tell you their justification or where to look for that information that they uh, what law or ordinance they're drawing their information from.
That's a great point. Citations, regulatory citations would be great.
Yes, necessary. Because.
And I, oh, go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, just like, this whole process has brought me to not trust a treasure an inch, frankly. So I would not expect her to act in the larger city's interest. She seems to have a particular agenda of her own, which I don't understand.
I was just, I was just going to suggest that um, we use language like, and Kristen kind of added the this part to, so if we look at the two questions, the first two questions as one sort of like, is the, is the town legally required to sell or is the city legally required to sell or, you know, and then can, can this be done? Um, as in, can they you know, deed it to themselves through the city council route, or can we pay the back taxes, that kind of stuff, just so there's not like, yeah, but then, I mean, the citations kind of take care of that, but some affirmative language as to potential solutions for them to answer yes or no on would be helpful too, I think.
Something which has crossed my mind is that the value of the thirteen acre parcel as the city sees it is very similar to the amount of the back taxes owed. Seems like this could at some point have been a point of negotiation of how to work this out. I don't know how that could enter in at this point. And it's worth considering.
Stephen, the um, one other question that came up, I think before you joined, was um, the specific location of the septic. So if, if you had any information as to that, I think um, that could.
It's just a little house.
So it's particularly close to the houses, in your not, to your knowledge, there's no chance it's on the larger parcel?
It is not.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, Fletcher, that's a good uh, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Rachel.
I'm just curious a little bit to ask the the council if the parcels need to be legally sold because the association Association of Conservation Commission has laid out a path for them to not need to be sold. So I'm, I'm wondering if instead of asking that kind of an open question, why, why don't we explain or pass the information that we have from the MACC on the council and say, tell us why you can't give us a green deal? Or what barriers exist to us using this process to pres- preserve this land as opposed to public sale and auction?
Yeah, um.
That's, that's what I was suggesting.
That's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, you know, is the city legally required to sell could be a part of it. I don't know if it's helpful, but at least that would be
Yeah, yeah.
clearly said, like, no, we don't technically have to. Okay, well then, can you, are these solutions legally viable?
And I, I think this ties into what the mayor was saying at the beginning of our conversation was that these parcels had to be auctioned. They had to be part of this public auction.
Yeah, the mayor used the word must, um, but then she also said that she was ex, she's considering the option of keeping the thirteen acre parcel, so to me, that says that the must is more of a choice than, than legally must.
She also didn't give any explanation on why it must go to auction, which is why I think that it's worth clarifying that directly with the legal counsel. It just sounds like she got a response from the legal counsel that leads her to believe that they have to be auctioned, but she wasn't able to explain that to us. There wasn't any citation for any law or any, or anything except by saying that if we had started earlier on in the process with other options, which I don't, I don't understand, and I know that's what she's saying, that she would like to understand and, and, and work together with us to um, to to clarify so that we can do that in the future, but right now, she didn't give any reason, any law or any specific around why that these properties need to be auctioned.
Uh, she mentioned something about seventy-seven B, which I don't know what that means. She said the auction is handled under seventy-seven B. I don't know what that means, though.
Yeah, so chapter, I believe it's sixty, um, section seventy-seven B. I, I don't know, or maybe it's, is that what it is, Travis? I think you just had it on the screen, but.
Yeah, I have it. I'll get it up in a second.
Yeah, and there's also, she also mentioned chapter thirty B, and there's a, apparently a a handbook uh, created by the state called the Chapter Thirty-B Manual Procuring Supplies, Services, and Real Property. So that could be helpful.
Um, I just wanted to add uh, for Rachel that I, I just added a question about whether that Massachusetts law, chapter twenty-one, section seventeen C, um, the limited, the liability exception um, for recreation, if that applies to city-owned conservation land. Um, just, just to clarify that if the city did uh, keep that as conservation land, if we would not have liability if there was an injury um, because of that, you know. Um, just to clarify that that would apply in this situation. Um, yeah, chapter uh, chapter sixty, section seventy-seven B, management sale or lease by municipalities, land acquired through foreclosure or under section eighty notice. I was, I was skimming through this, I'll say, um, I hadn't looked at this before this meeting, but when she mentioned it, I was looking at it. And um, it uses may a lot, so the city may appoint a custodian and this uh, the custodian shall serve during the pleasure of the mayor or selectman. Um, and then the custodian on acting behalf of the city may, notwithstanding any provision of the law, ordinance, or bylaw inconsistent herewith, sell at a public auction any such property, yada, yada, yada. So they may sell it. Um, I don't think they must sell it. I think, I think when the mayor, my, my interpretation of when the mayor says it must be sold at auction is that um, she referenced us finding a, a conservation buyer, and I, my understanding is she's saying we can't pick a conservation buyer and sell it to them. We are going to sell it, which is her choice, and it must be sold by auction. I, that's my understanding based on the context of everything that she said. But it would be good to get a legal, you know, confirmation of whether that's the case. Does that sound accurate to other people?
Yeah, so what you're saying, Travis, is she's saying it must be sold by auction if it's sold.
Yeah, that's.
Because the city can't choose a specific buyer, but, but she, she's not she's not necessarily saying it must be sold and cannot be not.
Right, and, and I don't think it even needs to be specifically an auction. It's just, there's qualities, there's properties of a property, public auction that make it satisfy the criteria for disposing of property like that, but um, it's just that you, I, I think the, the negative is more the the definitive piece, which is you can't just like connect with a private party and, and just sell it to them or, or give it to them necessarily. It has to be done another way, like public auction where people have a chance to bid.
Yeah, and I will say I um, the mayor called me on, was that Tuesday? Um, and um, I believe she said, she reiterated that it must be sold by auction. I think I said something to the effect of that there are other options, like keeping the land as conservation land, and she said something to the effect of um, that that's not the path the city is choosing to go down or something like that, so.
It's, it's, it's a choice, it's not.
It's a choice, yeah. But it's the mayor's choice, so um, unfortunately, we don't have any power to do anything other than recommend um, recommend.
I do want to say that, that's pretty important in, in uh, for, for the rest of the community to get garner support. What, what you guys do is very important.
Yeah, I was going to say, we do have another option, which we've already exercised, which is just bringing it to the public's attention so that there is public input on the process, which is our best option and, and it will I think succeed in this case.
Yeah, and I just want to add that the mayor did um, suggest that we hold another meeting to discuss this when I talked to her on the phone, so. That was, you know, that was something the mayor suggested as well, was holding a public meeting like this. Um, but I guess what I mean is, we don't legally have the right, uh, we can't stop the auction, we can't force the city to sell it to us. That has to be the decision of the mayor. We can advise.
Oh, we can advise and we can offer to purchase the property like it's outlined in the MACC and which is different than just advising, like we have funds and we, if we found uh, other, other funds, we have the power to purchase or to offer to purchase the property.
Yeah, I think it, I think the mayor would have to agree to do that, though. That, that's what I'm saying, like it all comes back to the mayor's choice, like, we can come up with options, but yeah. So I don't know if we want this to be another meeting that goes on until nine thirty at night, since uh, I don't think we're gonna um, you know, definitively decide anything or, you know, recommend anything tonight, I don't believe. So I have these, I have these questions. And I'll just read through them once again, and if everyone um, is satisfied with that, we could um, you know, we could adjourn, and then when I get the contact information, I can ask these questions. ask these questions, you know, to the legal counsel, and then we can talk about this again on Tuesday when we meet. Um, I don't know if anyone else has more they want to add tonight, but I'll just go ahead and read these questions, and then we can discuss. So, uh, one thing is I was gonna ask for citations for all of the answers, um, so we can, you know, be sure where that's coming from. And then, you know, is the city legally required to sell the property? Or what options are available for selling the parcels other than, oops, other than by auction? Does this, does the, does the law require a specific timeline for selling the properties? Can the city deed the property to the conservation commission? And then I'll send references that I have from MACC saying that they can. Could the conservation commission pay back taxes and acquire the property? Again, I will send those references saying that we can. Can the conservation commission fundraise to pay back taxes and purchase that way? That's one thing I'm not sure about. I don't know if we can get funds, like, from the public to pay and do that. I, I'm not sure how that would work. And then, does Massachusetts law, chapter twenty-one, section seventeen C, public use of land for recreational conservation, scientific, educational, and other purposes, landowners liability limited exception, apply to city-owned conservation land? And how much is the back tax obligation on the thirteen acre parcel? I'm not, do we need to include that one? Or are we gonna look that one up? Or, uh, maybe it wouldn't hurt to ask, um, because they would probably know the definitive source.
It's approximately fifty-six thousand dollars.
And that's just on the thirteen acre parcel or on both parcels?
No, 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 that's on the whole of it.
Okay, I guess we're wondering on just the thirteen acres, yeah.
I don't think that would be a question for legal counsel. I think that Kelly Varner, uh, for the mayor, would need to provide us with the financial interview. I, I assume that legal counsel is not necessarily gonna be able to provide us with financial aid.
Forty-three, no, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially what I was, you know, what I was asking too.
Do we know if we purchase either through us with our own funds or through fundraising, do we just have to pay the back taxes, or do we also need to pay the, what the, the property's been appraised at?
So, let me bring this up again. Hold on, I need to figure out how to hide you guys.
Well, I think, um, Erica, I think we have to pay the back taxes, but my, the, the other question would be, do we need to come up with a process of funds for ongoing payments?
Right, yeah, yeah, I know ongoing, but I didn't know if they would, would also want, I don't know, you know, money for basically, I don't know, like, what, what the property is worth. I mean, it sa- it sounds like the town wants to make some money. So, I'm just, I'm just wondering what the legalities are, you know, can, can they charge? You know, I mean, obviously they could charge for also the, you know, the, the price of it.
Yeah, that's the, the legal, the legal is different from their prerogative, which, um, they've been making clear.
Right.
That they, they do want some money, but a- as Travis has shown in the, in the handbook here, and, and in my experience, like, the town does not have to recoup that, those back taxes by some legal dictate, dictate. They just need to, uh, or they, they could deed it over to the commission, and those could be outstanding, but I don't think, you know, we would like to obviously help make them whole, uh, if they were willing to, to deed it, so.
The amount of back taxes for the thirteen acre parcel would be less than ten thousand dollars.
Okay, we'll probably still contact just to get confirmation of that. Um, contact Kelly or the mayor. You know, just so we have like the official response from the city. But that's good to know. Thank you. Um, where did that go? Oh, so I was just gonna read this again. Um, although the transfer method has the advantage of being free, a commission with a conservation fund may save itself time and trouble. It can do so by purchasing tax titled land after strict foreclosure by the treasurer, by using commission funds to pay the accrued taxes and costs, and obtain a deed in the name of the city or town for conservation purposes. So. It sounds like it wouldn't necessarily have to be the entire, uh, assessed value.
So lea- so legally, we would only have to do the back taxes.
And costs, yeah, any accostative accrued since then.
Right.
Or, you know, go the method of being transferred by the city council.
And then if I, I, my computer crashed, but, um, like I mentioned before Travis, that is part of my question if is, if the city were willing to just deed us the property, not have us, um, pay the back taxes plus accrued costs, could we still do fun, could we still pay them money to, to help offset the cost? Um, just not be sort of bound to that particular number, uh, because we went route A rather than B. So if, if B is the city council voting to deed us the property, um, you know, are, are we legally precluded at that point to raising money and giving it to the town for it? Cause I think we'd wanna do that.
I think at that point, well, if, if your, if your number is correct and it's ten thousand dollars or less, then you know, we, we need to check that against our funds, but that's, that, it's not unavoidable that we would be able to cover that cost. Um, we need to check and see what requirements there are. I mean, for ten thousand dollars, it's not a, um, a cost. And I think that if we were to raise money in addition to that, I don't think it would be problematic. The city would need to create a fund that allows us to maintain the trails and take care of the property the same way that there are trusts and funds that accompany other conservation lands that we have. And it would be good for looking to how we could go about raising money for that and what the legal expectations would be. Um, in terms of collecting year-long donations for the ongoing maintenance and care of the thirteen acre parcel.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we can do that in a lot of ways, uh, whether it be soliciting donations, holding events, uh, you know, fundraising events, it could be an annual event. Uh, at the park, I, I think there's a lot of options there, but I, I just did want to clarify that, you know, it would be the, if it's a ten thousand dollar tax burden for back taxes, there's still potential attorney fees and other legal costs, and the town may have some flexibility in accounting and how they assess that. Um, and then, um, but that's distinct from them deeding us the land. And if they did that, could we potentially raise money to, to help offset the taxes and, and then also, like you said, put money i- in trust for the property? I, I think there's two ve- two separate options there, and I'm, I'm just curious as to what's possible.
Okay, so are you asking to add a question for the legal counsel?
Yes, uh, yep.
So. Uh, could the conservation commission pay the back taxes, or another question would be, could the conservation commission, uh, be deeded the property uh, by city council, then pay uh, an amount less than the total back taxes?
Less than, more than, like, just, yeah.
Yeah, an amount different from, how about that?
Yes, yep.
I, I mean, to be honest, I think, you know, if, if the city would be willing to deed us the property, I think we, I, I would not want to pay another amount. I mean, if that was the, oh, if that was a condition, like it had to be, I guess maybe that's what you're getting at.
Let me, no, well, no, what I'm getting at is there's a difference between the recorder reading, uh, conservation commission is deeded property. Um, you know, um, back taxes outstanding, not that they would write that. Uh, but, uh, and there's a difference between that and conservation commission, uh, is deeded property and also gives money to offset back taxes in it. It's just, it, there's, I don't know, I, I just think, um, I'm just curious what the options are. If there's some, like, legal thing where you can't hand, we can't transfer money to the city if we go route B. Maybe it's not a good question, and I'm totally willing to, uh, get pushback, but for some reason, that's outstanding in my mind.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess it doesn't.
I, I think that the, that we should really tailor our questions to understanding, like, what is possible and what is not possible legally, with citations, and not stray into, like, negotiating over, over cost and prices, if you need, that that question is really not appropriate for a council, or is it more appropriate for if, if we decide to go the route of, of requesting the city council to vote to deed us the property with back tax outstanding, which is sounds like is a longer process, and we need to make sure that we have time to do that, then we can address the question of, of what additional negotiation might be necessary with the city in order for them to acknowledge that. But I don't, I think we we have to be very sure in this regard that we're not trying to get the council to negotiate with us, and I, I.
I don't, I don't want to spend any more time, this, that's not what I, Rachel, that's not, that's not what I, I meant, and I'm not making my point clearly, and I don't want to spend any more time on this particular issue. The, the only reason I'm asking this is because if option A, which is, we pay back taxes and get the property and then do whatever, is off the table for some reason that we don't understand, and option B, which is, you know, we go to the city council and they give us the property, is on the table, but it's not attractive to the city, and they, for whatever reason, I, I'm just curious if there's money that we can raise and, and put towards it, whether it be less than the back taxes, more than back taxes, just in case, option B is the only option, but there's this pushback against, well, then we don't get money. It, it may not be a viable question, which is fine, but I wasn't suggesting that we, for some reason, overpaid for the property. And, you know what I mean? I, I was just trying to look at the big picture, but it's not, maybe that's not a good question for the, the city, uh, council, uh, or the counselor, the, the legal attorney for the city. So, I strike it, I strike it for, as a request.
I think maybe we could ask other, you know, I can follow up with questions.
Yeah, I, again, it sounds like it's not, I, I don't, uh, I'm not asking for that anymore. I just wanna, I do, I just want us to clarify, you know, can we do this option that in the, in the MAC handbook, can we do this option in the MAC handbook? That, that's good enough.
Okay, alright. Um, and then another thing I was gonna add was, Rachel was talking about having a, a fund for this property, and, you know, I, we've looked at the conservation commission's accounts, um, at least, at least from a bird's eye view, and I'm pretty sure that funds can be transferred from one fund to another, like, obviously it depends on the specific fund and how it can be used, but, um, you know, I think our, uh, I guess I'm, I guess I'm thinking, I don't, I personally don't see the need for any fundraising. Like, the city could transfer it to us, and we could have it for free, and then we would be done, and then, you know, we could transfer some money into a fund for it, or if it's added to Rocky Mountain Conservation Land, it would already be covered by that fund, you know, if, if those parcels were combined and into one conservation area, you know? So, I guess I, I guess, you know, we're talking about fundraising and everything, but I, I don't even see, I don't even see why that would need to be done.
Well, I think, I think one of the questions Travis was, are we required to have some trust for, for public property that we acquire? And, and I think that's a good question, and I don't think it's true that we do need to do that. I just think it exists for Griswold, but I think it's a question that we should verify. But yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think that's valid.
Okay, I'll add that. I think that's a good question. Um, like, are, is, is the conservation commission required to hold, um, a trust s- like, specific for each conservation land? And you know, I think this is where, in the past, we've talked about our fees, um, like NOI fees and things like that, and I think that's where that money could go to, or, you know, some of that money can be moved around into different funds. So if we felt like, you know, if we need a fund, we could move money into it, and, uh, I think that's another, that's a, an entirely separate discussion, is how our funds work and how we could use them, and, you know, getting to the bottom of all that. But I think that's a good question. I, I can add that one in. Does anyone have anything else? Yeah?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, when I, um, crashed, it was up on the screen, but, uh, could we?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Share, just, I don't know where we were.
Some, sometimes I forget that I'm sharing, and sometimes I forget I'm not sharing. It's dangerous.
Um, the only thing I would add is is, is there anything that gets at the timeline of the auction?
Uh, yeah, I asked if there, well, I haven't asked, but does the law require a specific timeline for selling?
In the middle of all of it, okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I should make these bullet points or something. I'm zoomed in right now. I don't think we have a question about whether the parcels can be split. I feel like, it seems like they can, but do, should we ask that? And sold separately, or one kept and one sold?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're all, I think we're like ninety-nine percent sure that they are, there's no reason they can't be, but it, I guess it couldn't hurt to ask since it's sort of been inferred that they are somehow tied.
Yeah, the mayor did kind of allude to the fact that they were, they were together. Again, at the beginning of our conversation.
Then she said, then she said that, oh, I'm totally open to the idea of selling just the six acre parcel. Um, but I, I think she was even asking, you know, that she wanted to clarify that, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we could ask for confirmation?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can think of a better way to word this.
Sold, just sold separately, or, um, I mean, not sold separately, but, um, how about can the, is there any reason the parcels need to be sold together?
Yeah, or cannot be sold separately.
But yeah, I just don't want to put sold separately because the, we don't necessarily want.
We don't want it to sell.
Divided, divided for different purposes.
How about like, yeah, can the parcels be separated and maybe like?
One being auctioned and one conserved or something.
Separately, and then have an example, like, example.
Yeah.
Sell one, keep other for a con. I mean, I'll probably be sending an email so I can, I can be as wordy as I want to be.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do object to the word disposed of.
Yeah, I was trying to not say sell.
And handled, like, can be handled differently or something? Yeah, separately, differently.
So, um, as soon as I get the contact information from the mayor, I'll, you know, forward our questions along, cause I know we're on a tight timeline here, and hopefully we could get answers by Tuesday. I'm, I'm not sure how, how quickly that will happen, but, um, if not, you know, we can always, we can always hold another emergency meeting. I will say later in the week, next week, um, I have some personal things on my calendar uh, that I'll be busy doing, so, I don't know. I mean, that doesn't mean everyone else can't meet, um. uh, that I'll be busy doing, so I don't know. I mean, that doesn't mean everyone else can't meet, um. But just so you guys know. Are we happy with this for now?
Pretty comprehensive.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I just, uh, the only thing, um, the only other thing I would mention is, it's not really necessarily legal, maybe we could phrase it in a way for the city's attorney, but, um, you know, we, we, I'm curious if the city is open to, uh, putting a, an easement on the trail that goes across the, uh, six acre parcel prior to selling it privately. Um, because there may not, depending on the willingness of the next purchaser, there may not be an opportunity to do that. If that family keeps it for hundreds of years and, uh, just wants to block it off. So, um, I don't, I, I see why you're hesitating Travis, maybe because it's like, oh, you're, we're already gonna potentially ask for this. Are we also asking for this?
Well, well, I mean, I was just thinking, I, I don't think that's a question for the legal counsel though, that would be a question for the mayor.
Right, I, so I didn't know if we were combining. Uh, it sounds like these are just for legal counsel, but I'm saying, keep it separate, okay, yeah.
Well, I mean, we can, I did add, I did, uh, write down this other one, like how much is the back tax obligation?
Right.
Um, so I could add that there, I guess.
Yeah, so maybe is there any legal reason that the, um, trails on the residential, the house with, the property with the house on it couldn't be, um, uh, covered by a trail easement prior to selling, something like that.
Hmm, okay. Not present. Oh, my V key isn't working. There we go. I do kinda feel like the more questions we ask, the longer it might take to get a response.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
We may wanna prioritize the ones we sent in the first email or something, but.
Yeah.
At least we have a comprehensive list.
Should I send all of these or? Are some of these follow up?
You, you could potentially, uh, put in the narrative of the email that we would, um, appreciate a response if possible prior to our meeting or something, so if that means answering, so here's our priority questions and here's our secondary questions. I don't know if that's, that might just complicate things, but.
Yeah, maybe.
I do like having, um, putting a timeline on the response so that we can discuss it at the next public meeting, which is Tuesday of next week.
Yeah, I'll definitely request that. Um. That doesn't mean it would necessarily, uh, hold on, we just got a question in the chat there. Can anyone read that? I can't find it.
Yeah, I can read it. Is Stone Road, is Stone Ridge Lane a private road? As posted near the Bed and Breakfast? If so, an easement on the six would not get public access to the public road, would it? No, um, the trail I'm talking about, uh, on the six acres is only a section of the trail that gives access to Stone Ridge Lane. Or if you kinda just veer off the one side to High Street. Um, so it's just a step in that direction. Um, we would need to work with the current or next owner of the Bed and Breakfast property, or actually potentially the, the little parking lot property. It's hard to say which, cause my understanding is that the parking lot property on High Street is the person that posted the, uh, the trail. So it depends on where the property line is, but this wouldn't achieve, um. I, I guess my, what I'm suggesting is that the trail along the ridge line, which to my knowledge is the line that runs along the northwest edge of the property lines for these auction parcels. Um, just that that be an easement on, uh, the six acre parcel so that it stays as far away from the house as possible. Not that there's a trail easement that goes right to, uh, Stone Ridge Lane. Um, but that's obviously open for discussion. I just, um, you know, could see privacy concerns on an, on a future owner if it went. I, I don't know what the, the layout of the property is in, in the center there, so, um, my main concern is that the ridge line trail is, is, uh, the access is preserved, which would be the one along the northwest property line there.
And, um, yeah, and I was just gonna say, uh, that I think sometimes the way these easements happen is they get pieced together over time. And so this could be one piece and then maybe in the future, other pieces could be added until it, you know, does reach the, the road. Um, I.
Generally how our national trails get, uh, assembled, you know, slowly over time is, uh,
Yeah.
informal agreements and, and easements whenever possible and all variety of other options.
I guess I don't need to say, can the parcels be separated and handled separately?
They already are separate.
Can they be handled separately? How about that?
We might wanna specify in that question Travis, that we're asking, uh, from a legal perspective and not just like, is it okay if we, you know, like with the town?
I'll add the word legally to every question. How about that?
Love it.
Hey, so far it works pretty well. Okay, the word legal is in every question now.
Very clear.
And it sounds like this person does tax title law, so I'm hoping these questions will be fairly straightforward for the most part, so. You know.
Definitely.
They would probably have answers fairly quickly as long as they have time to get to them, I guess.
Travis, do you think that we need to like motion to, uh, authorize you to uh, polish this up and budget for, um, for community during the meeting?
Um, yeah, you cut out at the end there, but, um, I think it wouldn't hurt if we had a motion, uh, to, um, you know, a motion for me to, uh, on behalf of the conservation commission, submit these questions to the city's legal counsel on tax title properties.
Great, I motion to authorize Travis to refine these questions and submit them to the legal counsel after he gets the contact information from the mayor.
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Fletcher. Well, I'm trying to find the video. Oh, there we go. The videos were moved into this tiny little box. Um, all right, so is there any other discussion on that motion? Okay, um, is there anyone opposed to the motion? Anyone abstaining from the motion? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously and I will send these questions to the city's legal counsel after refining them, uh, on behalf of the conservation commission.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think this has been a helpful meeting. I just wanna say that.
Agreed, and I'll do some additional, uh, research on the, um, kind of anticipating these que- try to answer these questions myself via the chapter, thirty B and, uh, seventy-seven B, um, just so, just because.
Yeah, okay, and, um, yeah, I will save this document.
I also, I also motion to authorize Travis to, uh, descend clarifying questions to the mayor and clerk and city treasurer to better understand the, uh, back taxes and costs exposed from the M A D P.
I second that.
All right, seconded by Fletcher. Um, is it, any further discussion on that? Is anyone opposed to the motion? Anyone abstaining from the motion? Okay, that motion also passes unanimously and I will send an email to the mayor, treasurer to, um, figure out the exact number of the back tax obligation and fees on the thirteen acre parcel. Are there any other motions, including a motion to adjourn possibly?
I'll make a motion, uh.
I'll return the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion to adjourn, seconded by Fletcher. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed to the motion? Anyone abstaining from the motion? All right, that passes unanimously and we are adjourned at eight twenty-four PM.